Thank you for the cue. It is being recorded, and if any other persons present here or online are recording, please notify me at this time. Thank you very much. Anybody else? No. Thank you. So I apologize that we don't have our, for the planning board, we don't have our nameplates here, but also they're not very useful for people online, so we'll go ahead and introduce ourselves. So I'm George Tolumses, and I'm the chair of the planning board.
Jeff Sauer, vice chair.
Sarah Brown, member.
Peter McIver, planning board member.
Victor Michelle Clark, planning board.
And we've never used these microphones before, so bear with us if you would. So again, before we get to the public hearing, there's just the approval of the minutes of the October 3 meeting of the planning board. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. I guess the most substantive thing for me is in the, starting at the bottom of page one and going over into page two is the accessibility discussion we had. And I know that it says in the middle of the paragraph that Eric, Director Tuarag, said that projects involving public access are sent to the Commission on Discipline Access for their review and comments. But near the end of the discussion, I know I had raised the issue of them being involved in the tech review process, and I believe Eric said he thought that was a good and workable idea. Does that sound correct? So I think that should be added to the, near the end of that section, because it seemed like something worth capturing for future reference. Thank you. In the non-substantive, middle of page three, there's an errant apostrophe under Al Norman's comments, which says neighbors singular, it should be neighbors plural at the end of the second line. And just a little cleanup on page four. There were a couple of parenthetical comments that probably should be eliminated. They were just kind of, I think, someone had put them down just to follow up on, but they're not really a part of the minutes. So under numbers one and two on page four. Okay, and no other comments? So with those changes, all in favor of approval? That's unanimous? Thank you. We went ahead and just started because we had quorum, so. Oh, sure. So before we get to the public hearing, I didn't know if you wanted to introduce the committee? I know.
There we go. Yeah, this is the Economic Development Committee. We're happy to be here at a joint hearing with you all. I'm Mary Ann Bullock, Precinct 5 City Councilor. Here, you can use mine. It takes a second.
I think this thing is okay. John Garrett, At-Large City Councilor and struggler with microphone use.
Well, Homin Haas, At-Large City Councilor.
Can you use my?
So we're going to be moving into the public hearing.
Can we just double check? Do we have Counselor Healy online?
Yeah, he just.
Okay. And do we have Counselor Gordon as well, or no?
Mentioned to me she wasn't available.
Victor's managing them.
Okay, great.
Oh, but we're not seeing them on the screen there, is that?
I don't know what to, I have nothing to do with.
Huh.
Don't tell me anything about turning on.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what, why that's not.
Okay. Well, hopefully they can hear and can speak. So. So they should be introducing themselves as well, right?
Yeah, Counselor Healy, can you hear us? Or speak?
I'm muted right now.
Oh, we hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah. Great.
Okay. So, and is there anyone else you need to confirm is there?
I think that's all we have for tonight.
Very good. Thanks. So we're ready to move into the joint public hearing on a few proposed zoning amendments. And I want to give a little bit of framing before we get into it, but so I would open the public hearing and Chair Bullock, do you need a vote on that, or do you just?
I think we do need a vote. And I think, do I have to read the motions, or do we just open it? I've never done a joint hearing. I have to read the motions in a regular hearing, so I'm assuming.
Probably so then. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, let me get to them here. Okay. Order number FY25-024, the city council moved that it be ordered that the city council of Greenfield amend the zoning ordinance, Chapter 200, Section 200-12, semi-residential district SR by adding language in bold and by deleting language in strike through as follows in the attached Exhibit A, and further amends the table of contents and index of the code, and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the city of Greenfield. Order number FY25-24.1, the city council of Greenfield amend the zoning ordinance, Chapter 200, Section 200-40, multifamily dwelling subsection B procedure by striking Paragraph 4 in its entirety as follows in attached Exhibit A, and further amends the table of contents and indexes of the code, and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the city of Greenfield. Order number FY25-24.2, the city council moved that it be ordered that the city council of Greenfield amend the zoning ordinance, Chapter 200, Section 200-48, mixed residential business uses by striking subsection A in its entirety and replacing with language in bold as follows in Exhibit A, and further amends the table of contents and index of the code, and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the city of Greenfield. Order number FY25-025, the city council of Greenfield amend the zoning ordinance, Chapter 200, Section 200-14, by adding language in bold and by deleting language in strike through as follows in attached Exhibit A, and further amends the table of contents and indexes of the code, and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the city of Greenfield. And, sorry, I don't have the ADU one open. Sorry. Does anyone have the ADU one open?
Language, it's in the packet, but that's it.
Oh, actually, yeah, that's probably the, they gave us a full packet, it will be in there.
Just to mention, my understanding from Eric is that both ADU proposals.
Yes, we're hearing both ADU proposals. Mixed residential. Do you want to read? Are you with it? Oh, no, you're not there either. Okay, hold on, I think it's at the end here. Okay, here we go. FY, order number FY25-026, the city council moved that it be ordered that the city council of Greenfield amend the zoning ordinance, Chapter 200, Section 200-7.18, accessory dwelling unit subsection C applicability Paragraph 1 by adding the following language in bold, 200-7.18, accessory dwelling units amended by the city of, by the city council on May 20th, 2020. See applicability, an accessory dwelling unit within and an accessory dwelling unit attached shall require a site plan review by the planning board prior to construction. As part of the site plan review, the planning board shall determine that the total land area of the parcel submitted for the addition of the accessory dwelling unit shall not be less than 1 half point five of an acre, the net acreage of the total land in a parcel minus all dwellings included, all proposed accessory dwelling units. Internal roads or driveways or other buildings or developments shall be considered open space and shall comprise of at least 50% of the parcel. All accessory dwelling units shall meet the minimum setback requirement for the district in which it is located, ADU shall not be used for short-term rentals, and further amends the table of contents and index of the code, and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the city of Greenfield. There should be the regular ADU one in here, too. No, there should be a order. Because. I think they sent us an updated one the other day, so hold on. Sorry, everybody. There was a recent one that was updated. Oh my gosh. Semi-residential. The regular ADU is not in this packet. FY25-026. This is the citizens' one. Okay. It's page six on the website? Well, I can read that, but it doesn't have. Yeah, it doesn't have a order number with it. Well, I am going to read the. I will read this one. This is the most recent, no, there was a more recent amended one than this. George, what should we do here? I don't, there's no order in this packet, and. I believe there's a, there's a more recent amendment than the October 6 version that's in the packet.
Point, I'm not, uh. Not sure.
Should we open the hearing on the current? I'm just going to read this one, and if they can add in a fiscal order for it, then they'll add in the order for it later. Okay, proposed zoning amendment to the Greenfield zoning ordinance amended October 6, 2024. Note text with strike through is text to be deleted, black bold italic text is newly proposed. No, page six isn't it, guys? Okay, here we go. Yeah. Yeah, and our packet, a packet doesn't have it. So I'm going to just say, fine, that the other one is to, the other order for hearing is the ADU amended on the accessory dwelling unit of, and zoning ordinance 200-56, accessory dwelling unit amended October 6, 2024. And it strikes the owner occupied of Section A, number one, and it strikes Section 3 applicability, an accessory dwelling unit within, an accessory dwelling unit, and adds an accessory dwelling unit detached shall be required, shall require striking a site plan review. Section 2, striking an accessory dwelling unit detached shall require a special permit by review of the planning board prior to construction. Striking Section 3, the owner of the residence in which the accessory dwelling unit is created must continue to occupy at least one of the dwelling units as their primary residence. Striking Section 7, prior to issuance of a permit, the owner must send a notarized letter of the appropriate permitting authority stating that the owner will occupy one of the dwelling units on the premises as the owner, as the owner's permanent residence. Striking Section 8, when a structure which has received a permit for an accessory dwelling unit is sold, the new owner, if they wish to continue excise, to excise the permit, must within 30 days of the sale submit a notarized letter to the inspector of buildings stating that they will occupy one of the dwellings on the premises as their primary residence. This statement shall be listed as the condition on any permit which are issued under this section. Section 9, striking permits issued under this section shall specify that the owner must occupy one of the dwelling units. The special permit and the notarized letters must be recorded in the Franklin County Registry of Deeds or Land Court as appropriate in the chain of title of property with documentation of the recording provided to the inspector of buildings prior to the occupancy of the accessory dwelling unit. That is it for that.
And actually, I think there were a few more. D11 is being added, stating accessory dwelling units shall not be used for short-term rentals.
Yes.
And then there were a couple other on D4. It's about maximum gross floor area, and it says that it should be 900 square feet or one-half the total gross floor area of the largest existing unit in the home, whichever is less. It previously said whichever is greater. It currently says whichever is greater. And then in number 5, about parking, it is, would be added, off-street parking is not required for an accessory dwelling unit located within one-half mile of a commuter rail station or bus station. And these are all, this was compiled by Planning Director Eric Tuarag, and to adhere to the Affordable Homes Act signed by Governor Moore Healy relative to accessory dwelling units.
And I will take a vote to open the public hearing. Counselor Garrett.
Yes.
Counselor Minhaas.
Yes.
Counselor Healy.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well.
And we'll do the same, all in favor of opening the public hearing? I see, and myself, so that's unanimous. So we have, just to help orient people, I know that was a lot of stuff that had to be read, but just to orient people in simpler language, there are four other, in addition to the ADUs, there are four other proposals related to housing. One is to allow multifamily dwellings by right with site plan review in the semi-residential zoning district. One is to raise the maximum number of units per building allowed in new multifamily dwellings. One is to allow first-floor dwellings in mixed-use lots that include business and housing. And then to consider allowing medical centers, clinics by right in the central commercial zoning district. There is a physical signup sheet here, if anyone hadn't gotten up there yet, if you want to sign in to speak, people who are online, I know we don't. Gotcha, gotcha. Because we don't have the grid, grid format, something, so, or chat, right, access to the chat. So anyone online who wants to speak, please just let us know, and when we get to, we'll have you give your name and address to have you speak. Sorry for the technical limitations. And we had talked about, this is a public hearing, so we had talked about the comment, length of comments, and, you know, typically in the city council, when it's just a routine part of the protocol, there's a three-minute limit. But we want to be more expansive here because it is a statutorily required public hearing. And we were talking about four or five minutes?
I'm fine with five.
Okay, so we'll go with five minutes, and if someone has more they had to say, that they can't fit into five minutes, you can come up later, but we just want to keep the queue flowing to be fair to everybody. So, and you're able to keep practical time?
I will keep time, and so we'll ask you to wrap it when the alarm goes off. Yeah.
Nice. And I just wanted to make another framing comment, and this is partly based on some of the interactions that happened at the last planning board meeting where we were talking about these issues. And I just want to, this is something that people feel strongly about and passionate about, and that's great. And people are here, and this is, this is the kind of input that is so important for this kind of democratic process. But I just wanted to, really concerned about any kind of ad hominem attacks, people, because some people are disagreeing, and that's, that's fine, that's democracy. And I also want to encourage people not to get into what were the motivations of people who proposed a certain position. We just want to hear, you know, your, your opinion about the, the content of the proposals and the implications of those, and that will really help inform our deliberations. So thank you, just wanted to offer that. Okay, so we have a list. Thank you, Victor. Thank you. It doesn't get so inspired. So first person on the list is Susan Wergawdick. And as usual, if you could physically give your name and address, thank you very much.
Come on. There it goes, okay. Thank you for allowing us to present this statement to you. I'm Susan Wergawdick. I live at 45 Forest Avenue here in Greenfield, and I'm speaking to you on behalf of Housing Greenfield as well as myself. On November 4, Housing Greenfield met to discuss the proposed ADU citizens' petition, among other items on our agenda. We voted that the city council should reject the citizens' petition as written for several reasons. One, the petition as written provides more stringent standards for citing ADUs than those required to build a single-family home. At a November 4 webinar on this issue with the Attorney General's Office and the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, staff involved with developing the regulations for ADUs stated that zoning for ADUs should be no stricter than those for single-family homes. Both the .5 acre requirement and the 50% open space requirement are more restrictive than present single-family home building requirements and would therefore be in violation of the Affordable Homes Act. Two, we believe that the standards for citing ADUs in the citizens' petition are arbitrary. Any such zoning standards should be made with the knowledge of the regulations that are presently being developed by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. As those standards have not yet been made available to anyone, we believe that the citizens' petition is premature. Three, the zoning requirements of the citizens' petition puts all development of ADUs beyond Greenfield's water and sewer district, making it less likely that ADUs would be developed. Four, the citizens' petition also makes it impossible to build ADUs close to public transportation. If one of the purposes of ADUs is to provide housing for those who are unable to buy a home or unable to care for a home, these are very likely the people who could benefit from being closer to public transportation. We do, however, support two aspects of the citizens' petition and would encourage the development of zoning ordinances that would include these measures. All executive, all accessory dwelling units shall meet the minimum setback requirements for the district in which they are located, and ADUs should not be used for short-term rentals. We also, in relation to the second ADU petition, or not petition, but statement out of, from Eric Tuarag, that is in totally in accordance with the Affordable Homes Act, and we support the changes that need to be made in regard to that. And we thank you very much for listening to our concerns.
Thank you. David Singer?
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me okay? David Singer, 41 Granell Street. I'm going to come at this from a little bit different perspective than Susan. The enabling legislation did two basic things. One, it said that the ADU detached especially would be allowed by right, and the restrictions as the owner occupied would be done away with. Eric has done that to the current ordinance. However, the other part of the statute says that the cities or towns are allowed to create reasonable restrictions to be imposed, which are part of a site plan review process, that would be before the planning board. Now, I know that you have an amendment before you, but that is a citizens' petition amendment. But you all or the planning department has not really sat down and put reasonable restrictions into the ordinance. So what I'm asking you to do is, depending on time, let this one die on the vine, the planning, the planning director's request, and then come back and wait to see what the state says, and combine those changes, which I think are totally appropriate, with whatever the state decides are the reasonable restrictions, so that, so if you pass the law in one fell swoop. The reason it's a little dangerous to do it one step at a time is because if a person comes in and wants to develop an ADU with just the first part done and without the restrictions, as soon as they applied for a building permit, they would be in under that ordinance without the benefit of the restrictions. So they would slide in, in this gap period, and I don't think we really want that to happen. I'm not here to comment on yet what the restrictions should or shouldn't be. It sounds like the state is providing guidance. So all I'm saying is, the first part, I think, is done well, but the second part is not part of your ordinance, and therefore you've also left it open for the community to come in and, and ask for an amendment, which they've done. Another very important thing, which has come out of my own experiences over the last six months or so, is that since this is going to site plan review, I don't know if people understand, I think you understand what site plan review is from your point of view of looking at the plans, but there are distinctions in the law between what a special permit requires the city to do in terms of informing the butters and what a site plan review requires an informing of butters. There is no state law about site plan review, therefore Home Rule would allow you to create a method of giving notice of some kind to a butters so they don't have to find out about it by being vigilant and looking at the calendar, which nobody really does. So if you're going to have site plan review, I think you should have that put in. That means you'll have a robust discussion at times when there are ADU applications before the planning board, and you'll have people that are invited to attend, and, and I think that's the type of government that we want to have. But right now, our zoning ordinance does not have anything like that for any type of site plan review, so you have a chance to, to be originals in that regard. The other thing is, I'm a little confused about one of the other amendments, which talks about, we're calling it Amendment 2. It talks about doing away with Section 4, about the limitations of units in a building, a multifamily building. I guess I just don't, I don't understand what the reason is for that. I don't, I'm not saying it's a good thing or a bad thing, but by taking that out, what you're doing is you're causing the zoning board to decide what's reasonable and not reasonable. what's reasonable and not reasonable about size, because if, right now, there's no limit. There's a, there's a height limit, but there's no unit limit. So we would have to decide without your wisdom, I'm not, I mean, the planning board certainly as planners and you, the council, as the legislators, what you think would be, you know, the maximum. You could give the zoning board some room to go past the maximum, and I think that's, and there already is built in that type of situation in the current ordinance. Again, I just, it seems like a very major transformation, so, and it puts a lot of responsibility on the zoning board. So, you know, it wouldn't be the end of the world if it went through, but if you are planning, I'm just giving you feedback from the zoning board, what that, what that means for us if you do that. And we can handle it, but it's just something to think about. And that's it. I don't even think I took up my five minutes, did I?
Seven seconds.
All right. And thank you, all of you, for what you do.
Thank you.
Committee members, good afternoon, good evening. Thank you for being here. I, I want to start off by, actually, let me get something.
I didn't even start it yet, Al.
Well, good, thank you so much.
But you do need to say your name and address for it.
Sorry. My name is Al Norman from Grinnell Street. It's Grinnell Street night tonight. I wanted to, to share with you that I received a check this week. I'm going to hold it up for you to see. It's a check for $320,310 from a real estate company in eastern Massachusetts offering to buy my house in cash, as is. This isn't the first time this has happened to me, it's probably the third time at least in the last year. And I'm going to be writing later this month about the whole issue of corporate landlords and Wall Street investors buying up homes, driving up rents, driving up housing prices, because it is related to this ADU issue, and I'll explain a little bit more in a minute. But my message to you is that the Wall Street landlords are coming to our zip code. And for people who are skeptical of that, I will be talking in the next column I write in the recorder about an investment act that was filed by Senator Warren that is designed to prevent these people from benefiting financially by getting income tax reductions for buying these houses. So more on that to come, but I just wanted you to know that this is real, this, this check is fake. It says on the back, "Not a real check." But these people are real. They, they've purchased over 1,200 homes since they were created, and I'm very concerned that we will have them and their ilk coming through Greenfield in a way that we will not be happy. One of the purposes of our zoning now is to provide adequate provision of open space. It's not one that we talk about very often. We're talking about providing housing for people of all incomes, but we don't talk about the issue too much of providing open space. And when we do, we've talked about open space cluster development on lots over than five acres. But what about small lots? What about the lots that are .2, .3 of an acre? We need to preserve open space, not just on those large lots, but on small lots as well. The proposed ADU regulations in Section D10, that's the version that was submitted to the council, says that "no ADU shall be held in separate ownership from the principal structure." That means that renters of an ADU cannot own an ADU. I, I think that makes no sense at all. If we're talking about ADUs as being a potential pathway to homeownership, this makes no sense at all. So for that reason and others, we filed, a bunch of citizens filed our own amendment because the clock was already starting to tick on this amendment, so we had to file something. But if you look at Section D10, it says that if the, if the link between the owner and the renter is the only common ownership of both parcels, primary and ADU, if that link is broken, under condo law, all this, either, both, both buildings have to be private, owner-occupied. So all of this makes no sense in terms of what it means for low-income and modern-income The 104 Greenfield citizens filed a petition that requires a minimum lot size, minimum open space, and no short-term renters. I filed a public records request with the assessors because I wanted to find out, how many, how many acres, how many lots do we have less than .5 acres? Because that's a number that I had come up with four years ago, when we were first doing the discussion on ADUs and came up with detached units should have a special permit. So anyway, I got, I got an answer back from the assessor's office that said there are 137 residential parcels below half an acre. Honestly, I think that data is totally wrong. But I will tell you, my frustration is that I've, I've tried to seek out a number, because I've said many times, I'm willing to compromise on, is it going to be .5, .4, .3? You tell me with some data what makes sense. But so far, the assessors have been unable to give me a number I can actually believe in. So I would say to all of you, you're certainly welcome to try to find that number yourself. According to EOHLC, the Attorney General will only review town bylaws, not city bylaws. The EOHLC also says it will not review bylaws. EOHLC, however, will draft regulations, they say, this winter, and they will write model bylaws and provide technical assistance to local communities like Greenfield. They say that draft regulations are coming soon. Therefore, there will be, and there will be a comment period and a public hearing. So what, I would echo the comments made by Susan Wargaffdick and David Singer, we're ahead of the state, that's five minutes?
That was five minutes.
That was five minutes?
You're a talker, my friend.
I really can't, I really can't go too much faster.
Please finish your thought.
I can't go too much faster.
Finish your thought.
Finish my thought.
Yes.
We are ahead of the state in reviewing bylaws for regulations which would not have been written. Therefore, we agree with the recommendation that the draft ADU regulations and the citizen's petition should both be tabled tonight and held until the state issues final regulations and guidance. I also want to say, just, we believe that good zoning makes good neighbors, and that by right zoning eliminates neighbors, and I, Chairman Bullock, we, we, we do not support, I do not support, zoning amendment number two, as David said, which would allow, I had 50 dwelling units in a multifamily dwelling by right. It should remain required by special permit and with the current limit of only 24 units. I'm sorry I ran on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Joan Marie Jackson, 2 Chestnut Hill in Greenfield, Massachusetts. And I was happy to help work on collecting signatures for the petition whenever there is a questionable topic regarding land or homeownership, land values. The citizens have a right to speak up about it, and as all of you work to serve, they, hopefully, that you will listen. And so I'd like to amplify some notes as we do neighborly relations on a small scale and large scale, some things that I learned in accordance to my research. The reform or loophole known as ADU by right overrides local zoning and incentivizes developers to turn single-family homes into high-density apartment complexes, even in high-risk fire areas. ADU by right does not produce truly affordable housing. The units rent at market rates. The ADU by right targets many single-family homes, which forever removes these homes from the existing single-family inventory. ADU by right also inflates the cost of land and starter single-family owner-occupied homes, which is conducive for outside developers and investors to participate in. This includes not-for-profit and for-profit entities. Greenfield should be focused on creating vibrant boulevards, viable main streets that support livable, walkable housing and retail, instead of dropping density bombs in single-family neighborhoods. As our neighbors have explained to me, Trojan Horse land use policies, such as ADUs by right, are written with developers for developers. ADU by right makes homeownership even less likely, while developers are seizing a profitable opportunity set aside just for them. Our city's housing goals can be achievable without the corporate takeover of Greenfield's neighborhoods. We love it here. Let's stop deregulating Greenfield. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Next is Joan Pyphrom. I did not. I, I was, I hope I pronounced it correctly. I was just reading.
Yes, you did.
Okay.
My name is Joan Pyphrom. Can you hear me?
If you press the button till it's green, thank you.
My name is Joan Pyphrom. I live at 95 Maple Street. I've lived there for 25 years now, and I have paid, I am paying mortgage on a .25 I have a letter here that I sent to the Greenfield Recorder. I watched the tape of the October 3rd meeting of the Greenfield Planning Board discussing the subject of accessory dwelling units, ADUs. One person, who the mayor recently appointed to a five-year term on the Parking and Traffic Commission, ranted against, quote unquote, "many aging-not-in-my-backyard members of the baby boomer generation who still believed in the so-called American Dream model of detached, single, single-family homes." This man said a recent housing study calls for a minimum addition of almost 500 more housing units, and claimed that the baby boomers are proposing a, quote unquote, "minimum lot size of almost an acre each." That's 400 acres needed to meet the city's housing needs over the next 10 ye, excuse me, 10 years. I have heard no one of any age advocate that we need, that we find 400 acres of land for new housing. If you look back to the 1980s, Greenfield successfully repurposed empty factory and hotel buildings into housing for low-income and disabled people. The same people who spoke up for hundreds of new apartments then are now being disparaged for opposing the subdivision of small lots into multiple family dwellings. This attack on elders is unwarranted and unfounded. Adults of all generations know the downsides of ADU housing. The multiple six-figure cost of even small homes, the potential overcrowding of some of our already dense lots, the end of the owner-occupied requirement, higher property taxes and home insurance premiums on these added properties, the incentives, incentives for out-of-town landlords and investors to buy up single-family homes to convert by right into two- and three-family homes, plus an ADU in the side yard. The conversion of these homes into Airbnb short-term rentals. When you combine ADU subdivisions with by-right zoning, you end up with dramatically changed neighborhoods and neighbors who have no rights. This is not just a Greenfield problem. Every town has to rewrite its zoning code to deal with the radical changes to ADUs. Sardines packed into a can is, is an apt analogy. The actual meaning of by right, according to Merriam-Webster, is morally, lawfully I do not see anything moral about doing this. The reason I say that is because you're compromising homeowners and their properties. And also, I was a homeless person at one time. I did not live on the street. Thank God I didn't. But I, being a homeless person, I would not want to live in some ADU in a 900-square-foot dwelling on somebody's land. That is not my idea of the American Dream. People need more respect than that. And to me, that is not any respectful way. It's like keeping, I'm sorry, it's like keeping a pet in your backyard in the barn. That just doesn't do it for me. If I was, if, being, having been a homeless person, I was so lucky to have people helping me. And I really think that this plan, the planning board needs to shelve this and go back to the drawing board, because I cannot see any self-respecting person wanting to give up the, your homeowner's going to pay insurance on the land, more insurance. There's so many, I mean, the taxes are going to go up. Who's going to foot the bill for these ADUs on, on the land? Is it going to be the homeowner? I'm on a fixed income. There is no way I could do that. I can't pay any more than I am right now. I am still paying mortgage. It's a 30-year mortgage. I'm 73. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mitchell Spade, 2 Chestnut Hill, Greenfield. You've heard the previous speakers allude to the fact that this is not a priority, this should not be a priority for us. Our focus needs to be on a pathway to homeownership. Lack of a better word for, you know, they change it every, every year, what ADU is. You know, is it a hobbit shed now? Again, I think there's many ways to create a pathway to homeownership that we need to address. And I've said this over and, and over again, and it seems as though it's falling on deaf ears. We need, we should be having a conversation about making Greenfield a garden city, not a garbage city. Because of these changes, I would rank accessory dwelling units near the bottom of my priority list. They are very rarely a wealth builder for families who are trying to climb the housing ladder. People who are low-income are unlikely to be able to pay $250,000 or a quarter of a million dollars or more to build an ADU. A recent housing study in Greenfield said elders were the only population group that was growing. Other population groups are all shrinking. There are some seniors who may want to downsize, but there are others who want to age in place where they are now living, where they raise their children. If a senior chooses to rent an ADU, they become the subject to the whims of whomever owns the ADU. A change in ownership could lead to eviction. We just watched our 79-year-old neighbor in Greenfield with a Section 8 voucher get evicted by a landlord from Michigan. This, this elder had lived in his apartment for 21 years. It was a very traumatic experience for him. It was a very traumatic experience for him. More important than ADUs to elderly homeowners are programs that, such as the Circuit Breaker and exemptions that help, help them pay their property taxes. We are excited soon to be launching a new elderly and disabled tax fund. We helped get through the city council to avoid foreclosures. We have suggested to the mayor programs that help prevent foreclosure. We support programs that prevent, that provide assistance for distressed homes that need maintenance and repairs. We also applaud the programs providing assistance for younger families, such as down payments for first-time homebuyers and even first-generation homebuyers. Governor Maura Healey made home, homelessness a key component of her Affordable Home Act. She said homeownership is one of the primary paths to building intergenerational wealth and remains an important part of the American dream here in Massachusetts, as well as in the United States. Increasing access to these important homebuyer programs is crucial to helping families put down roots and strengthen communities. The governor's law authorizes $50 million for mass dreams to create first, first-time homebuyer opportunities for households in disproportionate impacted communities. It authorizes $100 million for common wealth builder programs to spur construction of affordable single-family homes in gateway cities and other markets. This bill creates a new homeownership tax credit for first-time homebuilders. On a local level, I haven't seen one, heard one bank or financial institution talk about supporting backyard housing. Now, most of the houses in this community do not, or property owners, have the equity to support a $300,000 ADU. Those are the numbers I'm working with now. You may come up with something that says $25,000. I don't think that's going to happen. Let's be real about it. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nikki Garrett.
Hi, everyone. I'm Nikki Garrett, 93 Hope Street in Greenfield. And I am speaking tonight to express my support of the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance. To keep my comments brief, I'm going to focus primarily on the amendments regarding the accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, as those seem to be the most hotly contested ones. I'm personally pleased that Governor Healey has included ADUs by right in the Affordable Homes Act, because they are one important piece to the puzzle that is solving the house, the housing crisis in Massachusetts. ADUs will only be constructed by property owners who, A, can afford to do so, and B, have properties that meet the zoning requirements that are established by the state and within the district that they're building in, such as lot sizes and setbacks. There are few property owners and properties that meet both of these criteria, and therefore we will not see hundreds of, of ADUs popping up in Greenfield. If we're lucky, we'll get a handful. So the zoning amendment that we're looking at is really going to apply to a relatively small number of people in parcels. That doesn't make it unimportant. The few, the few units that will be constructed will be, will open up valuable opportunities for a variety of people. For instance, homeowners who want to extend their living space so a family member can live there. Perhaps they themselves can move to a single-story dwelling, while another family member could live in their own, a larger two-story home, or so on. Or it could open up an opportunity for someone who's looking to rent, either out of necessity or preference. I've heard several public comments over the past few months, and again tonight, harping on the importance of creating opportunities for homeownership, pathways to homeownership. Though important, I feel that these comments are blind to the need for more rental housing options. Not everyone wants to own a home. Not everyone can own a home. For some, it will never be possible for financial or personal reasons. And many studies have shown that for, that increase in the rental housing stock reduces the average cost of rental units due to the economic principle of supply and demand. I personally lived in an ADU for some time in a community not far from here. The homeowners had originally built the ADU for an aging parent. They lived adjacent to a public school. They lived on a bike path, and it was near downtown in a small neighborhood. The ADU, as a matter of fact, was 900 square feet. I find it funny that someone else mentioned that direct number. After the, the aging parent passed away, they opened it up to renters in the community. Their, the homeowners renting, or screening process for renters was rigorous. They were very picky. And I was fortunate that they selected me as a renter. I was able to live alone as a young adult in an affordable home on a low income, in an affordable apartment, rather, on a low income, and I couldn't have afforded to, to own a house at that time. So this was ideal for me, and I was able to be a member of that community. I share this story to hopefully help dispel some of the fear and put some real context that are, A, your fear being conjured up around what our neighborhoods might turn into if we allow ADUs. Perhaps someone might me, someone like me might live in your neighborhood. Professionally, I work at the Franklin County Regional Housing Authority, and I can just speak from that perspective, that there is an abundant need for more housing options, particularly rental options for individuals who could not currently access homeownership. That includes accessible, physically accessible units. There's such a lack of rental units that are accessible, and ADUs are a really good opportunity to, to create those. ADU construction can happen in tandem with and not to the exclusion of development of affordable homeownership opportunities. So I just, I agree that there should be something in place to prevent or limit ADUs from becoming short-term rentals like Airbnbs, because housing needs to be preserved for Greenfield residents, not for visitors. I understand that the council will not vote on the ADU amendment this month, but I do hope that anyone with decision and voting power will not restrict ADU construction beyond what the state regulations will require when voting time comes around. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is, is it Jamie Bartak? J-A-M-Y-E? Is that the person here? Okay. Sorry if I messed that up.
My name is Artie Kime. I live at 126 Oakland Street in Greenfield. This is a letter I wrote to the editor. It was in the paper on Tuesday. I'd just like to read it. My wife and I enjoy our retirement in Greenfield. We live north of the high school and on a third of an acre. We and our neighbors have well-kept yards with beautiful gardens. They are more, there are more of the same on much smaller lots between here and downtown, and we know that passersby enjoy them too. We get comments of appreciation as they pass. Even drivers have slowed to comment on the flora. I don't want, I don't want that amenity phased out, yet a new state law mandates that accessory dwelling units, ADUs, can be built on parcels of less than five acres. How can Greenfield or any municipality let this happen by right, with no special permit required and current zoning ignored? Is government serving the people or forcing us out by not seeing the obvious? Under that, I have four bullet points. Property owners would sell to investors and developers who can offer top dollar to seniors on fixed incomes. The high cost of building such units would require higher rent than most seniors and other low-income residents could afford. More ADUs crammed into our town will make Greenfield less appealing to possible new owners, especially without adequate jobs with a living wage. As single-family properties become multifamily ones, more residents will rent instead of buy. What makes sense about a plan like this? I hope it's reserved, reversed, so I can continue to live here and Greenfield can attract residents who see its potential for all families in years to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephanie DuKlos, 166 Chapman Street. Forgive me if I get a little emotional and get a little distracted and maybe a little So I had asked for a separate public hearing on the matter of changing the by-right allowances of medical clinics as defined in our code. They were brought here as an omnibus type of zoning amendment, and so I would like to state that you guys are in violation of 40A Section 5. That says any amendment that requires a simple majority, which is now what the housing, ADUs, would require, simple majority vote, shall not be combined with an amendment that would require two-thirds vote. This is a change to our zoning ordinance, so I'm going to grieve to butter to a, the proposed zoning change regarding the allowance of a medical facility clinic being allowed by right. Currently, I have a civil lawsuit against the city of Greenfield and clinical support options incorporated. Docket number is included in the emails I sent. If you don't have it, I will supply it for you later. I know that George is currently an employee of clinical support options and probably should recuse himself from that vote. There is also currently against CSO a civil lawsuit regarding a discrimination against Chris Heath. He is not represented by an attorney and is awaiting one for civil litigation. Currently, also an open civil little lawsuit with CSO by Al Constantine. These are all matters of public record. I have stated them at either a zoning board of appeals meeting, a planning board, a site approval meeting, which, on several occasions, if you want to know what the real deal is about site approval, when I brought my concerns to the site approval plan meeting, my partner was asked to leave and the police were called. We're noting that I am in a butter to a property that is proposing changes that are not in current conformity, which means they don't, aren't conforming with our current bylaws. Others challenging zoning and permit allowances, now you've made many people in this town by the decisions of several boards have to go and hire attorneys. I myself am not represented. I cannot afford one, but I will, I brought this suit forward pro se. Other ones that are brought forth, challenges, 15 Arts Street LLC, aromatic fillers. Both of them have also had to expend money for legal counsel regarding decisions of the boards. I also want to state there's a 48 Section 7. I would also probably say there's a 48 Section 6, but I haven't finished reading the law. Violation, enforcement of zoning regulations, violations legally, if legally applied for special permits as required for our code and bylaws. CSO would be operating that building at 1 Arts Place, 6 Arts Street with all the proposed dwelling units of 45 without proper notice, without due process, and in violation of my rights as a taxpayer, the property owner, my rights to peaceful enjoyment, seeing as how I've been under construction in my neighborhood for five years, nonstop. And the things that wake me up in the morning are those construction trucks and the traffic and the blockage of my driveway when I have to go to work, because I'm not being notified. So a by-right process eliminates my right to the grievance in my court, in the court. You're going to change the law in favor of someone who is violating that law currently. The, the current businesses in the property that I am mentioning, they're all medical facilities by definition, which is Bridge Primary Care, Clean Slate, and General Pharmacy, as well as CSO. Bridge Primary, on July 1, came and rectified their misinterpretation or failure to completely read the regulations and codes and bylaws of our city. They came, they paid their fee. They came and applied for the permit properly and now have a permit that will be carried over to the Central Commercial District over at 55 Federal Street. So we have already required compliance with this, but we are showing favoritism towards certain medical facilities and medical clinics, and I have far more and I, and that I wanted to address, but...
You're welcome to come back after everyone's spoken.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Garth Shiniefeld, 26 Grinnell Street. Tough act to follow, but mostly just wanted to say Susan Morgafta, again, the Greenfield housing, mostly speak my mind, so I'll try to save a little time there. And note that by right currently, we can build one through three family houses, I believe, anyway. So the fact that there's a detached ADU next to my single-family home seems irrelevant. I would actually, you know, angle for expanding the availability of, of the ADU ordinance, the sizing to say that, like, oh, you can only put a, you know, half of the, whatever your current house is. So if you already have a big house, then you can have a 900-square-foot one, but if you have a small house, then you have to have a teeny one. Seems weird and all kinds of isms and esthetists and such in there. So I'll, I'll keep it brief. I just, you know, I, I think we should expand as much housing opportunities as we can in town, and especially in walkable and close-by neighborhoods. And, you know, I feel very lucky that I'm in a neighborhood where we can also walk right up to Highland Park, which is a great preserved open space. We have lots of, lots of parks around in town. I've lived in an 18-unit condo facility in, in Boston, had a little courtyard, and we could also get to lots of, lots of areas around, and that's, can be a pretty nice place. The, the main problem, of course, with density is people. That's the problem everywhere, is people. So the, but the way to, to control that is not to not have any people, it's to just make sure that people respect one another and don't make tremendous amounts of noise or blow up things outside people's windows, et cetera, et cetera. So thank you all for looking into this, and hopefully we can get some more housing in Greenfield and continue to grow our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Steve Ronhabe. I live at 206 High Street, and I took the time to come here because as a former counselor, I, I remember when ADU evolved. And at that particular time, a little over a decade ago, the, the idea of an ADU was to provide affordable housing for elderly citizens that were members of a family that were living on a primary property. Obviously, ADUs has evolved quite a bit since then, and I'm not sure if it's all for the best, but that's, that's life. But my suggestion, as Mr. Singer so aptly put, we really ought to let this die on the vine until the state of Massachusetts comes out with its draft resolutions. We're putting the cart before the horse. Talking about it now, we ought to get an idea of what the state wants. We ought to get an idea of what the state wants because that's who we have to follow the guidelines from. And I'd like to thank everybody for coming here tonight. Everybody was very well-prepared, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne Globacki?
Hi, there. Am I close enough? That's good? Too close? This is my inaugural presentation before you. I just want to say quickly, I agree with the views of Joan Marie Jackson and Mitch Spite and Al Norman, and I appreciate David Singer setting a bottom line of, you're writing something that at least notifies the butters of what's going on, but I would like to see also a chance for people to come and speak when there's an ADU going in. And I'm a little confused about whether David brought up, if you wait for the state to do their regulations, does that allow this limbo where someone can slide in and put in an ADU by right? Some concern about that. And also, just the other points were, no Airbnbs in an ADU. That's nuts. We need to regulate them better all over town, anyway. And the issue of corporate entities coming in and buying property is a real issue. I mean, I like to read the recorder. I read a lot of it. Sometimes I write in. But all you have to do is look at the real estate transactions every week, and more and more you see that a property is bought by an LLC, not Joan and David Jones, you know? It's being sold by a family and going to an LLC. And I haven't looked into it any further than that, but that's weird. I've been, you know... Okay, so I have also, speaking to my specific property, been in it for 20 years. Oh, I don't think I said 7 Madison Circle in Greenfield. We've been there 20 years. For 16 years before that, we were on Conway Street. We feel really lucky to have been able to make that move. And our particular property has quite a bit of space. I don't think it's half an acre, although it could be. It actually had a piece of property behind the house attached to the property at one point 30 years ago. And that piece of property, some LLC could see it from Colorado if we chose to put it on the market and say, "Whoa, look at all that room. We can do a lot with this." Come to find out, in our first year or two, there's a drainage line that runs across the property in the back that was put in in 1923 when Madison Circle Greenfield Homes Corporation built that area. And there's a big manhole cover sort of in the bushes, and the DPW has come through and looked at it. We're not really sure what's happening with it now. It was for the purpose of draining that area, which was kind of swampy, the whole Madison Circle area, when it was originally built. But they could see that amount of property and get all excited, but also, when it rains, you know, a good third of that area in the backyard is a bernal pool. It fills right up. So I want to make sure that however you go about citing things, and maybe that's the site review process, I have no idea, but that you make sure this is buildable land. So, yeah, I think people have spoken, you know, "I'm for more affordable housing. I don't really think ADUs are the way to go." Also, probably, I think the person who spoke saying there's probably not going to be that many of them, that's probably true, and maybe it can be a good situation for some people, but just in general, more, you know, put some careful regulations on this, and thank you.
Thank you. That's it for the list of folks here. Is there anyone who's in the room who wanted to speak? Please.
Hey, I'm Mark Odato, 29 Prospect Street. And if BlackRock is watching and still shelling out $320,000 checks, O-D-A-T-O, 29 Prospect Street. Here's the thing with accessory dwelling units, and the solution is the problem. And what's the problem? Problem is there's a housing crisis, okay? And how do we, what's the evidence for a housing crisis? Well, I keep hearing the idiom doubled up. People are doubled up in homes. And very often, I'm hearing as a rhetorical florist that there is adult children, sometimes with children of their own, living with their parents. And so one proposed solution is the accessory dwelling unit. And so here's where I see the solution is the problem. The problem is the adult children with the parents will be solved by having the adult children live with the parents, but in a separate building on the same lot. I mean, it's what substantively has changed from that. And I think, I was trying to think of a word. The word I'm coming up with is schema. I think it's the wrong schema to build ADU legislation based on a housing crisis and to create rental properties. I think, really, it should be, you know, one of our parents is alone and getting frail. We don't have room in the house. We have some land. We want to construct something. We just need some reasonable guidelines to do that. I think that's about it. Thanks, George.
Thank you. Anyone else physically here that wanted to speak? Before I check online, we're going to come back to you. Yeah. And I know we don't have the grid set up, so I can't really see everybody online, so if there's anyone participating remotely who wants to offer input, please speak up.
Oh, yeah. If you have a list, please read them.
All right, so we've got Patricia O'Neill.
Yeah, I'd like to speak.
Oh, great.
Hello.
Thank you. You just give your address obviously, and please.
Pat O'Neill, 34 Glenn Burke Drive. I actually think that my one-bedroom apartment is about 1,000 square feet, or maybe 900 square feet or something like that, and it's actually pretty great. And I think it's hard to find housing that is this size. Just hearing about the square footage being talked about, I think it would be nice to be able to kind of visualize what this might look like in these less-than-half-an-acre lots that people are concerned about. I definitely get not wanting to, like, create too dense of, like, just completely changing the feel, like, maybe it would feel more like Boston, and that would be kind of not ideal. But there's also, I recognize the need for, like, we're going to need so much more housing, and I guess in the future, while this is being figured out, while we're all thinking about how to approach it, thinking about open space and, like, preserving even this kind of suburban habitat for wildlife, especially to pass through, I think is really important to keep in mind. Also, like, all of the land use in these areas, like, we could have more, like, neighbor collaborating neighbor projects that are like rain gardens, that kind of serve a purpose together, or even, like, edible things, like, a lot of different kinds of resiliency things that can be done in the small scale. I want to make sure that we can try to think about that, too. And the other thing about this ADU topic is the ownership that people have brought up, hearing that LLCs, I guess this maybe just is for housing in general, that LLCs are buying more houses, is a little bit concerning. Housing should be available for people and not so much as a business, but I do see that maybe, like, if the ownership is one person, like, owning the single-family house or multifamily house and the ADU, if that's like a way of ensuring some security, then I can see how that might make sense. But also, for myself, I don't think that, like, and I guess just thinking about non-nuclear families, like, just different family structures, having an ADU and having just a lot of different housing options, sounds really great. I think it would be great to be able to plan for that. I know of a lot of people in my generation who would like to kind of go find a property, a multifamily property, or even, like, a property with an ADU, or the possibility of one, to pool their money with their friends and just create something together. So there's not a lot of options like that unless you go out and build it. So I'm excited about the possibility of that being a little bit easier to maybe do. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine Medoreng?
Just checking if you want to speak.
Eric Promac?
Nothing on call, please.
Does I use a Promac?
I don't have anything to say.
Okay, thank you. It's not my name, Jimmy? Sarah Engelmann?
No, I'm also...
Sarah Engelmann? I think that was Sarah.
Was that? No, that was...
And then Tom Ballott?
And the person who was just speaking, did they say that? I didn't catch it.
They said they didn't have anything.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, if there's no one else who wanted to speak for a first time, I know, Stephanie, you had more to say, so welcome to come back up.
I had mentioned the 48th Section, oh, Stephanie Duklos, 166 Chapman Street. Thank you for letting me speak again. 48th Section 7 violation. So we have a building enforcement officer, Mark Snow, supposed to enforce the bylaws, and, you know, instead, on this medical facility, instead of addressing the enforcement that I had brought forward, he has decided instead, this is also was mentioned by Eric Torog in the last meeting, that they're just trying to not hold a bunch of people accountable because it would be too difficult, after I had already claimed these in my complaint, my legal complaint against the city and against CSO. Section 48 violation, the code enforcement officer is charged with the enforcement of the zoning ordinance and shall withhold a permit, nor it shall not be granted for a new use of a building structure or land which would be in violation of any zoning ordinance or bylaws. Currently, we charge $100 a day for a violation. There are provisions in the law that state we can charge up to $300 a day, and every single day they are in violation. Currently, we charge 100. So seeing as I've made these claims more than a year ago now and have had to deal with the effects of not being given due process and having my appeal rejected at the site of plan approval due to a one day and a fact that it fell under Dover Amendment Protections, which is part of the 483 provisions of our general laws. We currently charge $100 a day, 365 days. That's $36,500 in fines for every medical facility that didn't come and act in accordance with our bylaws, our code, our application process, and the boards of this city, the city and the appointed, the elected, everyone that took that oath has a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers to collect and enforce these bylaws. Seeing as how I've experienced many claims that I have been violated due to the lack of the enforcement of these bylaws, I strongly don't support anything by right without notifying in a butter, without addressing the impacts, as within three days after I was told, there was no flooding hazards in the area of Arch Street because it didn't exist on a map. I was pushing a car out from under Arch because the flooding was so bad it was submerged. That flooding then receded with all the toxins, and I actually got a letter today from the DPW stating that I cannot drink my water because there are unknown substances and lead levels so high that I should not be drinking my tap water until that pipe is corrected or the area is corrected, and that came from I and I reports that I have been asking for for nearly a year. So I have made the claims in legal pleadings that Bridge Primary, Clean Slate, and General Pharmacy are all operating in violation of our bylaws, and that there was a fiduciary responsibility, as well as the fact that I applaud the overturning of Chevron deference that gave deference to agency boards, because prior, they would have qualified people on the boards and not just people who are appointed by nepotism or favorable positions on housing or other issues. Not only can they afford those fines, they are, I am claiming, doing the change of these definitions and the removal intentionally against me because I've claimed them in court proceedings. I'm going to go to the ADUs. Again, I would not promote ever having anything by right and not having the butters notice. I have lived through hell for the last year. There was no notice of impacts, no traffic studies. Those are all required. Medical facilities that have, they have a lot of traffic going in and out. Those were not considered. Those are actually legally, one of the irreparable harms I claim is parking and traffic and poisoning of my water. I also suggest that in order to address the unchecked, non-noticed 45 units that is proposed to be in my backyard exceeds the current unit capacity of those four units. They're in violation of easements, and I was told by the city code enforcement officer, we do not enforce easements. We don't enforce those violations that you are claiming. I beg to differ. I believe he has a fiduciary responsibility and responsibility to do his job. My suggestion is that you set a new provision and definition for unit capacity and define what a multifamily unit above four units is, and that more restrictions should be placed on any building development that puts more than four units in. That you do not approve allowing medical centers and clinics by right. That there's no first-floor downtown housing. This needs to remain a business district. You also have a fiduciary responsibility to draw some people into this town, into our business district, and putting low-income, affordable, or non-vetted housing proposals to our downtown district is also neglect to your fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers. I ask that you table these until determinations come from the Milton case that is currently at the Supreme Court level, that you table your decision... that you table your decisions regarding these zonings until we get clarification as to whether or not we are not in compliance. Because the way that I read the law is we're currently in compliance with what they want. There is no posting on their website that we are out of compliance. They posted on their website, who is in, out of, uh, who is out of compliance with the Affordable Act or the Homes Act. And I don't know if we are an MBTA community or an adjacent MBTA community, or if we're going to be before the zoning bylaw changes again. And let me tell you something, I am one of those people who looks at that calendar and every single agenda, and goes to all those meetings so that I can get a full picture of what's going on in this city. And one hand is not aware of what the other hand's doing. And there's laws being broken all over the place. And you have to protect our city from lawsuits for the violation of the laws that no one's ever looking at when they're putting these zoning amendments forward, or any of these allowances forward. I now have to go and spend, because I can't afford an attorney. I live in a thousand square foot home, roughly, on a post stamp. I'm fighting for the, the easements right and the easements and covenants that I've given and afforded to the city and to mass DOT. I'm taking them back by adverse possession. They are not keeping up their end of the bargain, or the contract, or the easement agreements in my deeds, or my meets and bounds. And because I cannot afford one, this is going to be an incredibly time-consuming next two years to be able to fight for my rights to be protected as a homeowner, a low-income housing district homeowner. My, my house is a HUD property. It's protected. I'm not supposed to pay more taxes, you know, my, my, my. I'm sorry, I'm going way over. Um, it's violating a lot of my rights. That's what I have to say. And so you have to take into consideration, when you eliminate the, the, someone like me, who, who can't afford those attorneys, who can't afford to put a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand K bond up to protect my rights, that's who you're infringing. Oh, and I've lived in my home for twenty years and paid taxes, and have lived in Greenfield for over forty-five.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you. Last call, if there's anyone in the room or uh, participating remotely who wants to offer public input?
Yes, hi, it's um, Ryan Whitney. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Um, I can just, I just wanna double that sentiment. I live with Stephanie Duklos. I am her partner. Um, it has been so toilsome for us, and I keep hearing people in this room talk about ADUs and like kind of this NIMBY mentality that everybody else has. I don't care if my neighbor puts their grandmother in their backyard. It's not that that we're scared about. These laws are so damn vague that it, it does put us in a threat, and it does scare us. We can't afford to move. I love being able to live in a home. I've lived in apartments my whole life. I love putting up my sunflowers. I love having the little garden that I am, like have, because I have a tiny ass yard, um, she's my friend. But it has been so, it's day in and day out, because we're not lawyers, trying to get some justice to the mistakes you guys made. You admitted in meetings that, oh, why don't, why didn't we catch this before? Oh, because no one brought it up was what was said by David Singer. Like, this isn't, so if something's not brought up, then keep doing the harm and enforce the harm to people by allowing this? Like, I, I just don't get it. So it, it, it really does take over our life, because we're not lawyers. And I, I just wanted to say that, because we're, we're, I come into these meetings and yell, and it's because every day I'm researching and at least two, three hours a day, I'm researching something on the town. And then not to be heard and pushed aside, i- i- it's really sad. When you're like some of the only population, like paying attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here or online? And again, can't see people online, so just speak up.
Artie Keim, one-twenty-six Oakland Street. I, I've listened to all this, very interesting. I've learned a lot. And I just want to say that uh, I'm glad I'm in Greenfield. I enjoy my neighbors. I'm really pleased with the businesses, the service I get. Uh, I'm not too pleased with the city government. And if you want me to stay, if you want other good people to stay, uh, you might consider that, because it can't go on like this. We, we bring a lot to the city. That's something the city wants. And I think city government should want us to stay and work for us, instead of us making like we're servants of yours. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're about to close the public input section of this meeting, unless here, pausing for a second again. Does anyone else who want to give input? Hearing none.
I will close the public hearing at eight oh seven PM. Oh, sorry, can I have a motion to end the public hearing?
So moved. To end the public hearing.
I need a second too. Thank you. And we have to do a roll call vote, because we have Derek. Uh, Counselor Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhas?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well.
And from the planning board, a motion to end the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. All in favor? It's unanimous. So um, this is um, a planning board meeting, and the planning board has on our agenda um, the option of uh, deliberating and perhaps uh, offering uh, uh, recommendations on these various um, proposals. I know that um, I had um, just to address the board, I had uh, Eric, I should mention Eric Torg uh, isn't here, because he's at a conference. He was uh, uh, disappointed he wouldn't be able to be here this evening. Uh, so I checked in with him. He said that from the point of view of these, that the clock, the timetable for these, there's not an urgent rush on uh, addressing these and, you know, coming to a um, uh, decision or recommendations by the board. He was suggesting, and it seemed wise to me, to wait till next month when he could be available as a resource to the board uh, to uh, proceed with this. And we're also hearing from multiple people who spoke, um, that they're suggesting, take a pause and uh, you know, find out what other, especially with regard to the ADU, um, what other um, what, what other developments there might be guidance from the state. So that seems like a wise, because this is on our agenda that allows us to do that. It doesn't mean we have to do that. Uh, do the deliberation and, and make recommendations. So interested in hearing from other board members. Your thoughts on that? Yep.
I have two thoughts on that. Um, one is it might be valuable for all the people to, who came. Um, if we did make a decision now, just in um, them knowing what our decision would be. Um, of course, there's nothing to prevent anyone from coming to hear the discussion and decision in the future. But um, there's that to consider. Um, and just in terms of complying with the Affordable Homes Act, um, I know that there was a deadline as part of the act. I believe it's February second, twenty-twenty-five. Um, so just keeping that in mind and um, you know, working backwards from there, if it would be feasible to put it off till next month. Um, not quite sure about the timing.
Thanks.
I think, so Eric, was that our last meeting, right? We talked about these, and I think we got his opinions and his, his reactions, or helped clarify what these means. I, I feel comfortable weighing in today on this. Um, we're also not approving the zoning. That's council's job, issuing a recommendation. So they can determine the timetable also relative to waiting for state guidance and hitting or not hitting the February second amendment or uh, deadline. So I personally don't think it's necessary to, to wait.
Thanks. And I'll also offer that these are not, not a, a cluster of, uh, these could be taken individually, all these.
Tonight, or, yeah.
At any time. They're not, they're not joined, uh, in the sense that they could be, we could deliberate and offer a recommendation on some or.
Well, another thought is we could talk about it, and if we decide we're really just at a loss on something, we can not act, not vote on that one. And if we feel like, you know what, we have this understood, we can go ahead and vote on it. And break it up and uh, I agree, the, the ADU one, there's new guidance that's been informally shared, but is not official, and been told that there is gonna be official guidance in the future. So that one is more of a moving target than the other ones.
Did you have some?
Sure. Uh, I personally, I'd, I'd like to thank everybody for their comments tonight. And uh, I would lean towards waiting until both Eric is present, and I'd like to see a little bit more guidance from the state as to what our required actions are as a city. Uh, and I would like to see, uh, hold on, I made a note. I guess more to David Singer's point, some guidance on what that site plan review would entail. Uh, and maybe some better definition to that. Also, let me pull the agenda back up. On the, taking these up in whole, I would like to see them separated, just for the extent that um, in full transparency, I am a city employee. So if there is a pending lawsuit, I have no guidance from uh, city council or uh, anything to the contrary. So uh, just out of an abundance of caution, I would abstain from that.
And just to be clear, just because these are being talked about on the same night and on the same page, they're separate. So we would take them one at a time, as far as any deliberation and recommendation. Victor, did you have a perspective on this? Oh, you gotta, need a microphone. It's gonna be hurting. Thanks.
I, I tend, Victor Michelle, I tend to uh, lean a little bit with Jeff on, on thinking that we should, some of these things are not so controversial, but I guess if we, you know, the multifamily dwellings, the number of units. I mean, there's been discussions about it, but I don't think they're that controversial. Uh, the ADUs obviously are, I, I'm all for sitting on that one, because if we've got the state who's actually started this problem for us, let them kind of give us some more guidelines and let them come final, that we can work on uh, making some changes if we're on. So I have no real issue with that one. I already expressed my views on the medical uh, by right. I think that's something that uh, I would not support. But um, I think four of the five, we should be able to at least have a discussion on and, and come with a recommendation. But if it's up to the majority of the board, I would guess. So if three of us say no, and two of us say yes, then we'll table it.
I'll offer an additional uh, thought, that uh, we've heard uh, from the public, a number of people concerned, excuse me, about by right, because the current site plan review process, um, in addition to not offering um, an option for legal recourse, as a special permit does, it also doesn't um, uh, it doesn't require notice of abutters. And I know that was one thing that was raised about the idea of considering if that could be adjusted, because we've heard from a lot of people, that that's a worrisome trend to go to by right, and especially if it doesn't. Unless you're looking at the agate type, you're not gonna catch, you know, when there's something that's gonna affect your um, your uh, uh, you know, situation where you live. And so I'm inclined to give that general uh, issue a bit of, that procedural issue a bit of uh, consideration too, before moving ahead with the several by right options.
I think, I think uh, David said that we could add that hint, that uh, just because by right doesn't mean that abutters are not notified. Because there's always a site plan review, even though it's by right, that the person, it kind of made me feel like we were supposed to find out who they are. But I would think the person who's asking for the permit and whose site plan we're reviewing, would, we could make them obligated to inform the abutters that there's going to be a site plan review on the property. I don't disagree with that. I think that's a great idea. Um, but that doesn't uh, that's not in the place, so we'd have to add that some kind of way to our, our amendment. So if like in the first, if we're gonna do multifamily, you know, site plan by right there, we'd have to add that into our ordinance. It says, okay, if you're gonna do this by right, the site plan review, you need to go and find the abutters and have them attend the site plan review. I don't think our ordinance or our recommendation says that. We're just saying, if you're gonna do a multifamily, it's by right, we gotta do a site plan review. We didn't put any requirements on site plan review.
Right. And that would be, that would be perhaps something that would be
Right.
a general addition around site plan review.
Yeah, anything that we're doing by right that has a site plan review, we should make the person who's requesting the, the, the thing inform the abutters, so they're gonna attend the site plan review. I think that's a reasonable request to make.
And my concern would be if we, similar to the scenario um, uh, David Singer was talking about, if we were to approve the ADU, and then someone comes in and, and, you know, uh, seeks a development, you know, before other considerations from the state as far as the ADU, then they wouldn't be subject to those. And I'm wondering if, there's, there's a lot of concern been expressed by the public about this general by right. Uh, there's also been support of it by people who, who want to uh, um, take down some of the barriers to uh, housing. Um, so I'm concerned that we, we, it might be wise to address that procedural issue before making a recommendation about these um, by rights. So it could be an additional uh, proposal. So that, that's a concern I have from a uh, bigger, you know, higher level consideration.
George, would you mind if I said something that might help you all decide if it makes sense to discuss this further tonight? Um, so we have an Economic Development Committee meeting on November twelfth at six PM um, at City Hall. On that agenda, n- neither of the ADU um, motions are on that agenda. Intentionally, I did speak with the executive office, who, there is some guidance that has been put out. So I, I wanna sign, kind of squash the, there is no guidance from the state, because there is some regulation from the state that's currently out there. The thinking right now, nothing is, is set in stone, is that that February second deadline is gonna be extended, because cities and towns that have town meeting are not gonna be able to um, vote on this in time for February second. Um, my intention as the Chair of EDC is to let the ADU, um, the, the current ordinance that Eric has updated with the current guidance that we have from the state, to die on the vine. And the reason I want it to die and not be tabled is because I would like it to come back in a more thoughtful form with the appropriate um, regulations that we will have better guidance from the state on put into place. And I want it to come forth for a public hearing again. If we table it, it will not have a public hearing again. It will go straight to committee or to council, wherever it gets tabled from. So um, that is my intention, intention with the ADU. The other um, additional motions are on the agenda for this month. Um, my plan for those is to make amendments. There, I have some recommended amendments that I got in email from constituents, um, as well as tonight. Um, and so it is useful to have. And so it is useful to have a recommendation on those, although there is a chance that those will be tabled as well. I believe we don't have to vote on those until January 4th. So they could come to the December council meeting, so which gives you all an extra month to deliberate when you have Eric in the room, if that's helpful to you. So the only other thing I just want to say for the public is that there's been some conflation with zoning law and building code. And I want to be very clear that none of the proposed zoning law would supersede current building code. So all of the things that say like you have to build X amount of feet from your property line and that structures have to be erected in specific ways, they have, they have to apply to current building code, that's not changing. So although I can't remember who said it, they said like the thing about the hobbit house sounds great, but if it didn't apply to current building code, that's not on the table for this. And the last thing I'll say is that I want to, I do want to remind us, I was thinking of this today as I was driving. We've had ADUs in Greenfield for over 100 years, more than that. The home that I live in was a six family home that was built in the 1800s on Hope Street, right along the railroad and, or a six, six unit. It was a workers dormitories. When we redid, put a bathroom in upstairs, we found that there was six separate units that were split up up there in a thousand square foot home. And so things like carriage houses, the homes that we see up in the Highland Park area, those were workers residences. The top floors of those, many of those were workers residences. So this isn't a new idea, although it is an idea that has phased out over time. But especially in my precinct, we've seen this happen in Greenfield for many years. So I want us to just be open to that. And I want to remind people that again, our EDC meeting is next Tuesday, the 12th at 6:00 PM. We will gladly take public comment there as well and welcome input. ADUs will not be on that agenda, but you are welcome to speak to them if you would like to.
Thank you, Mary. It's helpful. So given that additional context, wanted to get a sense from the board how I wanted to proceed at this point this evening.
So we would, so if the ADU piece comes off, whether they stay on, and then there's a new ADU suggestion in the future, that would come to us again, right? I, I mean, some of this thinking is incremental, states incremental about how they're rolling it out. I think it's valid to respond to what we know so far tonight with the acknowledgement that it is in our agenda. And then you can take that into account. I agree, it makes sense to, to be thoughtful about crafting this, to really think about what the guidance we haven't gotten yet is going to look like. They've given us some indications. But I think we've heard a lot of comments. It's fair to react to that and share our thoughts and keep the conversation two-way, even if some things are going to die on the vine next week.
So you were suggesting going through all five of these tonight, you would?
At least talking about.
At least talking about, okay.
Are we like, we possibly not going to, we should definitely talk about them because it's on our agenda and people commented on them. And we can decide later if we want, whether or not we got to any consensus or we feel like, you know what, we shouldn't make a decision, but we should certainly talk about them.
Okay. So we go in order, I assume? So the first one is allowing multi-family dwellings by rights with site plan review in the semi-residential zoning district.
And sorry, just to check, my committee can be dismissed. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you all. And I am going to go home and I will gladly watch your meeting another night. Motion to adjourn, please.
Can I just say something real quick to the public?
I think he has to tell you yes.
Yes.
I just want to thank the members of the public for attending this hearing. And that's because our job as city councillors is to listen and to respond to the public. So I appreciate everyone taking the time on other days to do so. I also want to say, we don't just listen at public hearings. So if you have thoughts about ADUs, the best way to reach us is to email us, or I would say even better for me personally, I would love to hear from every single person in this room, especially those who, and I will just say this forthrightly, I would love to see all these zoning amendments pass. But I also want to hear your concerns and I would love to have that conversation on the phone or in person, if that's a preference of yours, because I suspect that all of us want the best for the future of Greenfield. And the best way to have a community conversation is to have that conversation. It's, you know, again, so I, I just want to encourage folks to reach out to anyone on city council. And I'm sure the planning board feels the same way because we do want to hear you and, you know, we can learn from each other. So I just again, want to say I appreciate you taking the time to be here and I hope to get some phone calls before EDC next week from some folks because I know you care enough to take the time. So, thanks.
Yeah, just like the second that, I'd like to thank everyone for coming in. I think I share a lot of the concerns that many of the folks have about what the makeup of Greenfield would look like. And it's important to flush that out in the open. So I'm glad that you guys came out, shared your concerns. And I don't want you to think we're not, I know one member of the, of the audience said that they feel a little disappointed. I just want to assure you that we do listen. We're going to take this stuff into account. This is not just, oh, I'm my way or the highway type situation. We're going to discuss this fully. And hopefully we get more, continue to get more engagement from the public. But this was helpful to hear members of the public come out, no matter what side you are on this. Thank you.
And I'll just clarify that as far as reaching out to the planning board, that the best way to do that is to send an email to Eric Torg at the planning department and all such correspondence is shared with the entire board. So just want people to know that.
I will gladly take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Sorry, councillor Garrett?
Hi.
Councillor Minhas?
Yes.
Councillor Healy?
Yes.
All right. Motion adjourned, meeting adjourned at 8:28 PM.
Thank you. So does anyone want to kick off the deliberation about that, allowing multi-family dwellings by right with site plan review in the semi-residential zoning district?
The only thing I had to say, George, is we didn't, is the whole idea about the site plan. We talked about how that should be something that we have abutters involved in. So.
Why don't you wait just a second?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I do something?
I know you have to be over there manning the device. But did you want to say a preliminary thing before Peter goes?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Peter. I'll wait for you. No, I, again, I just wanted, we just talked about, you know, the site plan piece of the thing and how we would, the suggestion from the audience was that the abutters should be involved. I don't think we can, I don't think we should say yes, let's go ahead with anything where it's saying with site plan review until we have that piece of it in place.
Thank you.
I was just going to note that I pulled up the zoning map to get a better, better view of the SR zoning. And being very familiar with this area of town, I'd just say that the majority of the homes that are located in that area are already multi-family. So I'm inclined to agree. But to Victor's point, I would like to see a better understanding of what that site plan review, I know we did recently have discussion about site plan review when the property on Country Club Road came up. And we would like, I think the board's discussion at the time was, we would have liked to have more input on what that looked like. And, you know, if four random people up here have some input on what we'd like to see, I'd also like to know that, you know, when my wife opened a daycare, we lived on Conway Street, that was requiring a special permit. I had to send notice to every single one of my abutters on Conway Street. That's a lot of people. There was an expense to that. And, you know, we were a new, new family. There's a huge cost to incur to try to pull that off. But we did it. And we subsequently went through that process. We opened our business. It wasn't, you know, overly complicated. It wasn't overly burdensome. I don't think that's a big ask for someone that wants to develop to have to notify their abutters. So I don't think that that's necessarily something that could be looked at as, you know, overbearing bureaucracy or something that would prohibit development, just having the common decency to say that, hey, I'm planning on doing this. If you want to talk to the people that have a say in whether or not that happens, you know, come to the meeting on X date. So I think that is valuable to add, but I don't know the process to do that. So that's all I have to say.
Thanks. That would be something I think we should get Eric's opinion on. I don't know what currently triggers a butter notices or not. I don't know how elaborate or much of a burden that is. That is probably a different amendment to a different part of the zoning anyway. I'm not sure we can attach that to each of these. It sounds like, I think, David Singer's still here or not, the suggestion was to make, to change zoning such that site, all site plan reviews require a butter notice. We're not talking about just an ADU or just a multi-family. It's, that's, we changed the way site plan review works. And I think it makes sense to revisit that for other reasons too. But I don't think, we can still move forward with these and get back to that because that's a much bigger conversation that we're not going to resolve next month either. We shouldn't hold up all zoning amendments until we figure out that bigger picture issue. And it's, in the meantime, we can just, and I also don't like, so we let it go as it is for now. In the meantime, I think we could just put that on our agenda. It's kind of, it's kind of already been on our long-term agenda to get to that anyway. So just remind ourselves that that's something to add to that conversation. I do think that it's, a quick chat GPT check is that it is legal. That was another question. Is it legal to make people notify abutters for site plan review and not special permit? And my initial take is not being a lawyer and the AI not being a lawyer, that it's to the discretion of the town. But it'd be helpful to have some legal guidance on that so we're not imposing something that isn't legal to impose.
You had more, Peter?
No, just to, I guess to further clarify, I'm not opposed to moving forward with the change. But I did just, you know, I wanted to, I guess vocalize my, my support of adding that change down the road. And without Eric here, I just, I don't know the process that would be entailed to, to do that. But it is an agenda item. I am comfortable changing that with or without that.
Eric, do you want to speak to it? Yeah, I'm, I'm torn. I've long had a concern that site plan review doesn't have even a notification. I mean, there's the issue of notification. There's the issue of having a guaranteed opportunity to speak to it once you're notified. And there's the option of having, with a special permit, more possibilities for redress if you're concerned about it. But I've always thought it was just, it was too big a gap of not even hearing about something that would be happening. It could have some significant impact. And, and it could even be some informal, you know, negotiation, you know, with the neighbor or something like that that might, might improve things. So, and, and this would all fall, and I agree, we're not talking about changing it for a particular, you know, section. It would be, and this is under the administration section, Article 8. And so there's a section for special permits and a section for site plan review and approval. And yeah, I don't, I don't know the legalities of changing it so that there would at least be notification. But I, I would certainly be in favor of that. And I find myself, though I'm in essence supportive of the multi-families, making it easier for multi-families to be in that district. Yeah, I don't want to be obstructionist, but I also want to really respect how this impacts on, on abutters. So I'm a little torn, to be honest. So my inclination, since we had heard from Eric that these aren't, I, I would be happy to discuss if we have a, you know, collective point of view on the merits of that particular change. But I would prefer not to send an official recommendation until we at least can confer with Eric about the process of making a change with regard to the site plan review procedurally. So does anyone want to speak to the merits of that?
Some of these are more urgent than others. And not urgent, but like we already know ADUs is going to get changed too. So we should talk about it just to advance the, the conversation. This one, I think that the, we might get an answer from Eric. I guess to make it not be by right means to, the, the big change from going from by right to not by right is the level of recourse that other people have and the level of work that the, you know, expense and complication that you, that the developer or owner has. So what's the difference between notification and more recourse to abutters? Is it just, a butter should know what's going on, have a chance to talk to the neighbor? Typically, you should talk it out, don't get lawyers involved if you can. Is that the goal? Or is the goal to give them more leverage to influence what happens? Or do we not know?
And that would be the, the details of the discussion, I think, if we're going to make any recommend changes to the, to that portion of the administrative process. So, so I guess we can, we can just, I mean, anyone, anyone on the board can make a motion at any time to offer a recommendation. I don't want to, you know, preclude that just because of my hesitation. But I didn't know if anyone wants to speak to the, the merits of this, if they're supportive of this. I, I am in essence supportive of this change. But my only hesitation is about the by right procedurally.
I support it also.
Yeah, I also support that first bullet.
Me too.
It sounds that we have, and then the question is, do we, you know, make a motion to offer a recommendation tonight or do we hold off? So that's.
And it has with site plan review in it. So we can define what site plan review is later. But the site plan review is going to be associated with this and it will be required, whatever that looks like now or later.
Yeah, George, were you concerned with potentially making a recommendation on this proposed zoning amendment and then making a change to the site plan review later and how that would impact?
We're, we're having a number of these recommendations of going to by right, which cuts down barriers. I'm in a lot of ways supportive of that, but I'm really sensitive to how that really makes, makes abutters blind to the process. And so I'd like to keep, keep the fire under us to move forward with that administrative change. And we'll get to it at some point. Like Peter was saying, we, we have talked about it in the past and kind of in a general way, but we haven't come up with some, you know, research about how can we do this and what can we do to change this? What, what would be legally, you know, sustainable? So I'm, I'm encouraging just holding off for the moment, just so we can try to, you know, accelerate that process because it affects multiple things. It would affect the ADU issue as well. So. Prefer not, thanks. But you're welcome to, to write, write to Eric. Thanks.
The, the ones that include by right are the, the first one, the multi-family dwellings, the last one, the medical centers, and then ADUs technically. But we know that the by right is not going to be legal for the state. I mean, the state's not, you can't have, you can't require, I mean, it's going to have to be by right per the state legislation for I mean, it's going to have to be by right per the state legislation for ADUs. So we can't leave that in there and still be compliant. We can't leave in the special permit requirement on that one. In the meantime, we can, we can leave the special permit requirement on and the other ones because we don't have a state law in two months that tells us we need to change it.
And the question is, when, when it becomes by right, how does that work? That's, that's my point.
Yeah. So I would like to know that too. Okay. So, so you're suggesting.
If, if we're going to require that the site plan review has the butters notified, which essentially makes it a public meeting type thing. They come in and talk if they want to talk. That's no different than leaving it as a special permit. It makes no difference. I mean, because we're adding the same task back in. Special permit makes them go before the public, have a discussion and they look at what's going on. So it's really no different. So if we, if we have them, I, I think people should know what's happening in neighborhoods. I don't disagree with that at all. But if we, if we put in the site plan review is now public being, the public comes in and has a discussion and speaks. We haven't really gotten, we haven't removed any, uh, I hate to use the word delays. We haven't removed any of the obstacles. It's still there.
Well, special permit.
The special permit.
Sorry. Has additional requirements as far as how it is scrutinized. And it also, um, does give, have a public hearing.
Yeah.
And I don't know if we're, we would be suggesting to require a public hearing. Um, ob- obviously we've been, uh, this, this board has been quite, uh, open about accepting public comment, even when we don't have a, you know, statutory, statutorily required public hearing. Um, but so I don't know what it would be. Uh, notifying the butters would be a, a first step. So.
Yeah. So we'd have to define if we're going to allow, if we're going to add, tell the butters it's happening. We can say to them, okay, you can, you can send us an email if you want to make a comment or something like that. Not necessarily. We have, we have to define whether it's going to be a public meeting.
Right.
Whether they have public comments at a meeting. Okay. All right.
Those would be the details we'd have to clarify.
Because everything we're trying to do, from what I understand again, is they're trying to allow things to happen more easily. And so we can get more housing into the, into the greenfield that's both affordable and market, not just all affordable.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't want to keep adding things back in that the gate, what we're trying to move forward on. That's all.
But that's the intention.
Yes.
And then we're hearing from members of the public concern about at least knowing what's going on. So.
Okay.
So.
So could we put that on, like a discussion about that on the agenda for next time?
Sure.
Is that what, like, how do we make sure that shows up on the agenda and when Eric's here, we can talk about it?
I was planning to contact Eric at the beginning of the week if, if that's the board.
What is that? What did you want to add, Steve, to the agenda?
Say again?
Discussion on the site plan review?
Yeah, for next time with Eric. Yeah. To get his, I mean, you can talk to him and it might get modified and put on your conversation. Yeah, I think that'd be a good thing to talk about.
I couldn't call him Steve Jeff.
So again, I'm not trying, I have a point of view. Um, um, you know, I don't have any more power than any other member of the board. I'm just trying to facilitate the process. So, um, if anyone were inclined to make a motion to do a recommendation now, that's always possible.
Why don't we, we talked about by right. Let's talk about the rest of the.
Okay.
The listed.
The next one, raising the maximum number of units per building allowed in new multifamily dwellings. And I was a little confused earlier because David Singer spoke of no limit, which had been a little bit about a discussion, but I didn't know that that had been changed because the, the copy I got most recently from Eric, um, huh? This is the October 3rd?
Yeah. So the, the other one, the other agenda has more, it's, it's.
October 6th?
Hold that, turn to that page. I can.
Point of order, are these documents available to the public that you're gonna?
These are the agendas that were posted to the meeting.
It has been sent to us.
Yeah, this, this is, this is the material regarding the, uh, second zone amendment and, um, it had read, uh, to change from, uh, a limit of 24, uh, dwelling units to 50 and no more than six dwelling units in a single primary entrance had been, um, proposed to be changed from six to 10. Um, and so that was what I think this had been the one sent out by Eric most recently.
I think my understanding is the, the version of that that the council would be voting on strikes all of that language.
Yeah. As far as the numbers.
Yep.
All the numbers.
The no limit.
No limit to the number of units total, no limit to the number of units served by a single entrance and no limit to the, no minimum separation per zoning of multifamily buildings.
That's a, that's a version concern. I don't know what everybody else here, did you have access to that?
I, I thought I heard there might be, I'll, I'll look on the city's website and see what, what's on there.
Sorry.
In our minutes, um, Council Garrett said he would, he would strike that whole, he would take this one away and propose another one that strikes that whole section. So I'm trying to find the, like, the record of that.
In the, let me go back so I can see where it is. On the page under Planning Board, Planning Board Meeting for Tonight, the packet link has all the documentation that is being considered.
Mm-hmm.
And under Zoning Amendment Number Two, does not include the complete strikeout. It is what is referenced in the Agenda Packet, which is the 50 dwelling units.
Okay. So this is a version concern because what has been disseminated to us and to the public.
The date on the top is the October 3rd document.
And.
There, there's another one.
No, I understand that. And then that's what.
But then it's, I got it on the website too. So the other, there's two planning board links on the calendar. The second one has an agenda that shows zoning amendment number two with all that language struck out.
So that's a concern for me because, I'm sorry. So, um, yeah. So I'm not comfortable, you know, voting on something that isn't clear what version we have. And, uh, so I think this is something that's unfortunate.
So why do we think, what, what? We, we got an email from Eric within a, a previous version. And now we're looking at, but Peter, where did you get your version when you were on the website?
Uh, I followed Victor's access document.
On the Planning Board?
Yeah. If you go to, if you go to the link for the Boards and Commissions and then under Planning Board, you can click the packet for the meeting. Right.
On the calendar, the, it says the agenda was revised November 4th.
Yes.
And the agenda, the only agenda that you can download from the calendar is the one that strikes the full section.
But in the Planning Board page, it has different, a different version.
Um, but so if we don't have, if we're not sure, if we're not sure of the version, we shouldn't be voting on it. That's unfortunate, but it's.
I'm sorry for that confusion. I, I hadn't, uh, picked up on that discrepancy or I would have addressed that with Eric and made sure the board had.
The documents that Eric sent on October 18th also referenced the 50 units.
Yeah, that's what I have. Yeah. So he hadn't sent anything out since then. So I, I did see too, in the minutes, the, the suggestion that, uh, Council Garrett would do something, but if we don't get a document, you know, uh, through our official channels, we can't. It, it doesn't seem official to the board. Um, so. Again, we, we are not under time pressure to do this. And I'm hearing.
I, this one, I would say we, there is time pressure, in my opinion, on this one. There, I know that there's multiple, the, the, the rules in, I mean, the rules in the amendment are making it impossible to build apartments, build new housing in certain sites in town. And the rule about the distance between buildings, the number of units served by each entrance and the maximum number of units per building are why those, those projects are either smaller than they should be or not happening at all at this time. And we did hear some testimony to that effect at our previous meeting for one of these projects. So I think it's like waiting a month on that one because of a technicality. If that's how we have to do, then so be it. But there's some urgency to that one because, you know, some of these projects can only kind of sit on the, the table for so long and it just becomes less and less affordable to people, less likely it'll actually happen.
I do remember that, um, Christine Midori of the, uh, Mass Housing Partnership spoke to that as far as the, uh, stating that this is in the minutes, that 60 dwelling units is typically the threshold for financing of low income housing, uh, which uses low income tax credits. So I, I was, you know, uh, relating this and I had a note to myself about this, that it was 60 rather than 50. And I heard, um, you know, David Singer was also suggesting there could be some provision in there to, you know, be flexible about some of the parameters.
Can we, I'm sorry.
No, good.
Can we make a recommendation on the language that's in our packet that includes a suggestion that they make additional changes to it? Like we could, like, so for example, we, we support that amendment with the strike through, with the suggestion that they strike the rest of it through.
Yeah. I'm honestly not sure. Um, and they have, the, the council in their packet had a different document than we have. So.
Another question.
I'm, I'm honestly not sure.
Can they vote? If we don't make them, our recommendation is just information for them.
Correct.
It's not a threshold thing.
Right. The only, the only, uh, if we didn't make a recommendation and they proceeded, the only thing would be if they were to vote something down, uh, it can't come back for, I think it's two years. Whereas if the Planning Board had made a positive recommendation and then it got voted down, it can't come back. Um, and that has happened actually recently. So.
That would be worse for the, my concern on this, the projects we talked about.
And again, as Chair, I applaud this, my purpose and intention is to facilitate these being effective, uh, proceedings for the board and, and support the board. And I wish I had caught this earlier to be able to reconcile this. So.
Well.
I apologize.
What they're voting on is not what we, okay. So if they vote on something that we didn't look at, it can't come back for two years if they vote it down.
I, I'm not totally sure. Yeah. Yeah. But I appreciate your, Jeff, your, your point about, you know, not, uh, taking it lightly about moving ahead with things. So.
Well, for what it's worth, those rules are, the whole thing, in my opinion, it was that of the motion to recommend maybe, but those, all those rules should be struck because they're not, they're, they're arbitrary.
Gotcha.
There's lots of other controls for building safety density, building massing that are already in place. I think what David Singer was talking about is in the central commercial district, there is no, so in, in other districts in town, the unit density is controlled by a minimum lot area per unit.
And parking requirements.
Sure. Yeah. Off-street parking requirements. Those all kind of set how, what you can, how much building you can fit and how many units you can have. In the central commercial district, there's no lot size limitation. So the constraints to density are the height and the open space percent. It has to be 15% open space and it can only be 50 feet tall. So that's four stories basically.
And, and I think it was such comments by you at the last meeting that resulted in the intention to change it, but then it didn't get.
Can you make the same comment a second time?
Yeah, yeah. No, no, but I'm just saying that, that, you know, had influenced that.
Okay.
So, um, I, I do want to be sensitive to, and I remember from last time we had a meeting, which was, was kind of like the, I want to check with the board if anyone wants to take a break, a five-minute break. Uh, if anyone does, that, that, uh, it's, it's not a majority vote. That's a, if anyone wants to take a break, please say so or?
I'm, I'm fine.
All right. Um, so, uh, I don't know as far as having these two, uh, different versions. It's really unfortunate. Um, but it makes me hesitate to act. So.
Well, if I, one, one thing I will say about is the, the way it's written here, raise the maximum number of units per building allowed in a new multifamily dwellings. We're just saying yes to that. We're not saying yes to what the final, I meant my final ordinance will be. We're just saying, yeah, we agree. You should, you should change, you should raise the maximum number of units in a multifamily dwelling. We shouldn't really have to care about what the ordinance itself says. We, we're all very for letting them be unlimited. So I'm, I'm thinking we could say, give a favorable recommendation to the fact that we want to increase the number of units in a multifamily dwelling.
It, the issue comes up of is something a substantive change? And it seems like if you had, if you're going from one limit to another, and then the alternative is no limit, that seems like a substantive change, substantive change. And so if we were to approve or recommend something that had a different limit, and then the council's concerned, something that says no limit, I don't know if they're reconcilable.
Okay.
That's, I don't know.
All right.
At this point, I do think it would make the most sense to move to action item B. Um, if other people are okay with that.
And just so the public knows, that's, you're talking about moving off of these,
Yeah.
all of these, uh, proposed zoning amendments.
That's what I'm suggesting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So basically wait till next month to proceed further with some of the steps we talked about to reconcile that and to check about the site plan review procedures. Any objection from other board members?
I would be fine with that. I, I think, what about three, the third one?
Okay. The third one is to amend section 200 dash 48 to allow first floor dwellings in mixed, uh, use lots and the language that, uh, this had been something we changed, uh, recommended, a tweak to the proposed language. And, um, the, the language initially proposed was all dwelling units shall be above the first floor level. Um, the street level. Oh no, that, that was the, that's the current. I'm sorry. That's the current. The proposed, uh, change is to say first floor dwelling units shall not be allowed along the, the street side with the highest traffic use. So on the highest traffic side, uh, you couldn't have a first floor residence, but on the other sides you could. And currently, um, you can't have anything on the first floor. That's even with the, uh, so that would give more flexibility about housing.
In a mixed, yeah. So again, that's a, there's a, there's a project, a, the very supportable project on Main Street that needs that rule to change. I mean, it's, if you want to build anything on Main Street, it's, it would make sense for it to be a mixed-use building to put retail on the ground floor. But if that lot happens to extend back into the back of the lot, you should be able to put housing on the ground floor when you're not on Main Street.
How does it not conflict with the LIHTC? The tax credits of that would apply for them.
I don't know.
So, um, okay. So that's, uh, I do think the, this proposed language is clear after we tweaked it a bit. So any, any, uh, you suggest we move ahead with this one before moving on to the next action item?
Yes.
Any, you're obviously supportive of it. Any other discussion from board members?
I didn't hear what Stephanie said regarding some kind of tax credit. What did you say?
So I have a C3 designation and tax credit. I'm a tax credit compliance person. There are restrictions on where the location of housing units can be in conjunction with retail space. These are issues that when I was working for the community builders at Lightwood, we were running into on the new application of the funding for the tax credits because once they had expired, we came back, we could redevelop. At that time, we could invest more money, which essentially the tax credits come back at a dollar-for-dollar investment for the, for the investors on the project. But there are very strict regulations regarding the location of retail or shopping, uh, because we were trying to push in a convenience, uh, store out in Lightwood. So they'd have more access. They said it violated the, the tax credit laws.
I think, but we're talking about zoning. So if you, if you have a tax credit project, it's, it's like building code. You, the zoning is not the building code. You have to comply with the zoning and the building code. So in, in the case you're talking about, you, that's for the, the light tech people to, I mean, a, a light tech project would have to comply with that. a light tech project would have to comply with that. So maybe they couldn't do this. But if it's not a light tech project, we shouldn't hold them to the same standard. It's, it's a light tech question, not a zoning question.
So, but you just said that you're changing the zoning for the, the Wilsons project.
I wasn't talking about the Wilsons project.
Is that not what you just said?
It's not what I just said. There's other projects in town too that have been proposed. That's not what I'm talking about either. I, I think.
So I would, I would, um, offer that I'm in favor of this zoning amendment. And I don't know if anyone else wants to discuss it further or wants to make a motion.
Well, I'll just mention that I think one of the rationales behind this, um, proposed amendment is a lower cost, potentially accessible unit that would not require an elevator because elevators are very expensive. So it could open up the possibility of having a, um, housing unit to someone who has accessibility needs.
Right. Thank you.
Thanks.
What location?
Because.
We're just talking about the.
We're talking about a general zoning change. It's not specifically to any location or any project or anything. Any other comments from the board?
I would be in favor.
Okay.
Me too. Like, so we're not, we're not, uh, anything we're suggesting doesn't supersede anything that's already in place and required. In other words, building codes or the tax codes, right? We're just trying to open the door to where if it can, if it can comply with all the existing laws, it's now allowed. That's really all we're trying to do.
And we're not the deciders, we're the recommenders.
Right. We're just recommending that if, if a project comes forward that's, you know, part of a retail, is it of the, the, there's 10,000 square feet and they can only use 9,000, there's a thousand square feet that's of no use to them, but it could be a residence for somebody, they could do that. As long as they comply with all the other existing laws and requirements and guidelines, we're now saying, you can do that. That's all we're doing.
So is any member of the board inclined to make a motion? Please?
Make a motion to recommend, what do we say to the?
Positive recommendation?
Positive recommendation to amend section 248 of zoning ordinance to allow first floor dwellings and mixed-use slots.
Is there a second?
I love, or second, sorry.
Is there, is there any further discussion from the board? Hearing none. All in favor.
Aye.
It is unanimous. And at this point, are we ready to, uh, move on to off, from these zoning proposals onto?
George, if I may. So the only, the only recommendation that we're moving forward with to the, to the is, is the one on ground floor, first floor dwellings. All the other ones are being tabled, correct?
We're, we're just not taking action on them at this point, it seems like.
Same thing. So the only one that I'm going to say we're moving forward on is that one.
Yep.
Okay. Just want to make sure I got it right. All right. Thank you.
Of course. Yeah. And it's listed as zoning amendment number three in our.
Yes, here, I've got it listed.
Yep. Um, okay. So moving off of those, we have something simpler process, which is this is an approval not required or an A and R. Which some people who tend to hear, it's a pretty unique, uh, process to Massachusetts where, uh, someone is subdividing a lot and, uh, it has to meet certain requirements and it is not up to, um, the planning board to, um, we're not, they don't need our, uh, approval. It's just a matter of us endorsing that it meets the criteria. So is there a, um, uh, is there a motion about that? A and R for endorsing that A and R?
Yes, I'll move that we endorse the A and R.
Is there a second?
Second.
And discussion, is there any question about, it looks like pretty clear that, uh, lot number one is being taken out of the larger lot and there's lots number one and two, and it meets the frontage and access requirements? Any question or?
Remind me on the A and R, we have to pass a secondary motion to allow you to be the signatory on behalf of the board?
Yes. We have to pass this one first, but that is true.
Got it.
All right. No further discussion. All in favor of endorsing?
Who's second in the motion for you to sign? Who made the motion?
Oh, no motion was made on the signature.
No, no, just.
No, for, for him to sign.
As far as the doing the.
Yeah, for you to, I've got a thing that I need a motion and a second for you to sign the paper.
Okay. We're, we're just taking a vote on the first motion, just endorsing it.
Sorry.
That was just my question on process.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
All in favor of endorsing the A and R? Aye. And yes, please.
Uh, move that the chair could.
To sign, sign on behalf of.
Sole signatory.
Second.
All in favor? I, you know, okay. Um, thank everybody. Board and staff reports. Um, anything from the CPC? From the committee?
Uh, no, the only thing to report was that I missed their last meeting. So I, I have a meeting set up with Susan to go af, go over all of the action items. And, uh, they've got a lot of the same amount of proposals that were brought forward, uh, last year and a pretty packed agenda and a lot of, a lot of neat projects. So more to come.
Thanks. And I'll, I'll, uh, thank you for your, uh, uh, your example because I, I missed the last meeting of the master plan advisory committee last week when I was sick. Uh, and I haven't had a chance to, um, watch the tape of that yet. But, uh, it is, we are wrapping up the review of the, uh, changes to the, to the two chapters. So uh, I will update next month about kind of where that stands exactly and what the next steps for that are. And the other thing I wanted to mention is, um, uh, Amy McMahon, uh, has obviously been an alternate on the board. Um, but, uh, a few months ago was, has, has had difficulty attending a few months ago. You know, when I reached out to her, she agreed that she couldn't at least continue with the CPC as our representatives. So that's when you stepped in, Peter. Thank you for that. And at that time, she said, I probably will need to resign from the board. And obviously she hasn't been attending and I was just finally able to get a hold of her. Uh, she's been so busy with her restaurant and stuff, but she, she is apologizing for being hard to reach and she is, is reluctantly needing to resign. We have a procedure for removing someone for lack of attendance, but I thought, you know, for her long service, didn't want to have to do that. So that was great. She did contact the mayor's office. So we now have two open alternate slots. Um, so we'll wait to hear if there's anyone.
So you're saying Amy resigned?
Say again?
Amy resigned?
Amy resigned, yes. Just because not, not being able to attend.
Just to be clear, an alternate participates in everything except voting. Is that right?
So an alternate, right. We, our procedure is pretty loose about participation in the discussion.
Right, okay.
Uh, but an alternate by definition is there to fill in, you know, if necessary, when, um, and our practice has typically been that if we have less than five, you know, uh, board members present, we would move somebody up. You don't have to. For a lot of procedures, you, um, uh, don't, um, need to have that, but.
So you're trying to get quorum?
Get quorum, but also there's some, uh, there's some votes which you need four people. And so rather than give someone, you know, you want to give someone a chance to have five up there, uh, voting. So that would be what they, but we've, like I said, often had a lot of participation from alternates.
Right. Just thinking if we were to.
Yeah.
Pitch this to people, would it send it up for us?
Yep. Okay. Uh, the next meeting date would be, what's the first Thursday?
George, one quick, quick question for you. Whatever happened with the, uh, public access document slides we were trying to get out to the, did we ever formalize that? The thing I showed on how to, like what Peter said he used today. Do we ever formalize that and how are we going to get that out to people or where it's going to be? That's something we need to continue to discuss because I don't think we ever really established anything.
Hmm. I, I kind of thought that was.
So, um, I accessed that tonight. Uh, under departments, under planning and development. It is the header to the page.
How to?
On a how-to guide right there.
Great. Oh, wonderful.
Nice. Yeah, I thought Eric was.
Pretty neat. It's gonna fall.
Nice.
Excellent. Okay, that's.
Yeah. And Victor, just like, I'm sure you know this, but, um, the minutes say the board, the minutes from our last meeting in October say the board reached consensus to put the how-to guide on the Department of Planning and Development's webpage. And to also add a link to the agenda on the meeting calendar. And it seems like both of those have been done.
Yeah, we just had conflicting agendas.
What was that?
I said, we just wound up having conflicting agendas.
Yeah, the meeting packets were, yeah.
The packet was the problem because we didn't have something to vote on.
Yeah, for tonight. So we just have to make sure to check that, I guess.
But I appreciate you, uh, taking the initiative on that, Victor, in response to the public input for the need for easier access. So. So what's then first, uh, in December, first Thursday?
It's the fifth.
Okay, that's our next meeting date. And at 6:30, remember that's our new meeting time.
Yeah, I forgot about that. I was sitting outside until quarter.
Senior Center at six. I said 6:30 now. And, uh.
And I'm assuming the next meeting will be back at City Hall Meeting Room?
I, I'm assuming too.
Okay.
George, I just have one note on the December 5th. I will be out of state that week. So I will not be able to attend.
Thank you.
And if I'm able to attend, I may attend remotely.
Okay.
I might be able to make it in person, but we'll see.
Okay. Thank you.
And we need four?
The quorum is three. Three, it's a majority of five.
Five, so, yeah, okay.
And I think if someone is attending remotely, every vote needs to be a roll call vote.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the, the condition is just, it, it always had been prior to COVID that you had to have a quorum in person. And, um, then there were very strict, there were five particular reasons someone could participate remotely and one was being in the military or some of the various things. But, uh, obviously COVID changed everything. And now the current, uh, expectation is you only need one person there and everyone else could be remote, but it still counts as a quorum as long as you have enough. Oh, cool. And where?
Evansburg.
Is it? Oh, okay. Cool. That'd be great. Thanks. Anything else people want to do besides adjourn?
So what's the, I just want to clarify, what are we discussing next time? Because we tabled it this time. Just, should we just run through really quick what the agenda will be?
So, yeah, so these other four issues will come forward in some form.
As action items again?
Uh, I'm not sure. Um, um, you know, I'll, I'll confer with, uh, Eric, uh, probably. Um, because the board may want to act at that point, but I'll also highlight to him about the, uh, the discrepancy on the, uh, the one ordinance as far as the version and also about, uh, trying to see what, uh, what could be put together as far as, uh, possibilities for the, uh, administrative, uh, site plan review process.
Okay.
I don't know if there's anything else beyond that from him, but, but I'll get, he's, he's at the conference today and tomorrow and I'll talk to him, uh, beginning of the week.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. So floor is open for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Yeah, that was. Thank you everybody for your service. Thank you, Victor, for doing all that.
I don't know how they look tonight though.
What was that?
So I'm not sure how they look tonight. It's kind of hard. I, I got nothing from the chair of the EDC. She was rattling those numbers off so quickly.
Oh, that's, that's okay. That's, I mean, that's just procedural. That's the technicality of what has to be read. It's.
I got most of this here, but.
Yeah, it's, it's weird that the, uh,
I guess it was another button I was supposed to push that no one told me which one it was.
Right, right. Well.